Thank you. All right, so this is the not regularly scheduled Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting Thursday, February 11, 2018. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
As amended.
As amended.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Lisa makes it.
Second.
Jeff seconded. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we're on to 05103, Rugged Scott LLC. Sir, sir, sir. Go ahead, Arthur.
Thank you for the record, Arthur Reed for the applicant developer. Just briefly, I will report as to the status of the various matters that we have pending on this with the various lot owners. As far as Lot 20 is concerned, we're proceeding ahead. And as soon as we obtain the paperwork signed by and a few remaining points worked out with, the owner of Lot 17, who has the easement on Lot 20, for the garage, which is on Lot 20, to enable that to be moved to Lot 16, we'll be able to complete that, as we reported at the last meeting. With regard to Lot 24, I have to report to you that we thought at the last meeting that we had come to a settlement on that. Our representative in the field had met with the owners, and I had been in touch with their attorney, David Glad, and on the basis of that, we thought we had a deal subject, and we went to the HDC to get some minor tweaks to the garage plans in order to do that. However, this week, we learned that that settlement was apparently being repudiated by the lot owner of Lot 24, based upon an email and other materials that she sent to Eleanor. And we now understand, in fact, that that owner has hired new counsel, has discharged the attorney with whom I had been dealing. And based upon that email, I think it's apparent that at this stage of the game, we do not have an agreement with that owner, contrary to our earlier expectation. Lot 27, as we reported at the last meeting, we've not been able to work out any agreement with that owner. Lot 14 is also in play to some extent, and on that, at the last meeting, we learned that the owner had engaged counsel for the first time on this, first time with regard to this issue, namely Sarah Alger. And I heard from Sarah a couple of days ago with a list of things that they wanted. I haven't really had a chance to go over that in detail with my clients as yet, although I think it was a rather aggressive list of things that they were looking for. So that is the status of it, as far as we're concerned.
Is there a lot 27?
I'm sorry?
27, yeah.
It was 27.
27, we have no, we, at the last meeting, I reported that we were, that that owner also being represented, I'm sorry. Yes, also being represented by the same counsel as 20, and at that time, 24, that we were not able to reach any agreement with them, and there's been no progress toward any agreement with that owner since.
No progress. Okay. So arguably, Lot 20 is a matter of time, just a few.
Yeah, I don't think much time either. I think that can be worked out pretty soon.
And it's mostly, didn't, at the last meeting, remind me, please, you had to get permission, relief, to put the easement on to Lot 16?
16, yes.
And we did not grant that specifically, didn't we say that we would like to tie all that together?
Yeah, that's basically right.
Okay. I just.
We still want to, you know, do that exactly as proposed, namely for you to allow us to put that by easement on Lot 16, which is a market rate lot, for the benefit of Lot 17, another market rate lot.
Yeah, I think the board indicated we didn't have a problem with that. We just wanted it all done.
Right.
At the same time. Okay. So then, moving on to Lot 20.
Can I just chime in on that?
Absolutely.
Procedurally?
Sure.
If there would, you know, would need to be a new modification or a modification to the modification if it's going to be moved to another lot, you would need to, you would need to give your approval of that. So there could be a withdrawal of the current request if this all works out, but there would be a modification request to move it to Lot 16.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Marion, you asked for a modification, did you not?
16, yes. You have pending still a request for the insubstantial modification to put the garage easement area on Lot 16 for the benefit of Lot 17.
Right. Yeah, so they did request a modification, it's just still pending.
Okay. I don't think I have a copy of that.
Okay. That's, okay, that's correct. Eleanor, y'all?
It was submitted January 3rd or 4th.
Yeah, it was submitted January 3rd.
We discussed it at the January 11th.
Yeah, we did discuss it at January 11th meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So Lot 24, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak about that? Please.
Hello, I'm Carlie Scums, the daughter of the owner, Shmalawati. I just have something that I wanted to read. We closed in December 2016. By June 2017, we were made aware of the easement situation and told that the garage easements belonged to us, and it needed to be resolved before the developer sold the last house or nothing could be done after. This was when we started reading about 40B rules and regulations and meeting with other affordable homeowners affected by the easements. Section 2 of our deed rider states, "The property shall be occupied and used by the owner's household exclusively as his, her, or their principal residence. Any use of the property or activity thereon which is inconsistent with such exclusive residential use is expressly prohibited." Section 3 of the deed rider states, "The property shall not be leased, rented, or encumbered voluntary or otherwise." How can this encumbrance be allowed when the deed rider clearly states the property shall not be encumbered or used for the benefit of someone else other than the property owner? What happens if we were to sell? The encumbrance would make it difficult to do so. Our stance since day one was to fight to have the easement released back to us. We do not want or care to have the garage. We just want the 885 square feet of land back. Currently, the only open land on the property is the side lot with the easement. The front and opposite side is our walking space only. Part of the 40B rule states that the affordable homes are supposed to look, supposed to not look different from the market rate from the outside. Clearly, the garage easements on the affordable lots are a difference. The original approved comprehensive permit shows no easement on Lot 24. We have been working with the, had been working with the developer towards an agreement, but after getting an estimate from another contractor to finish the basement the way we would like, not what was offered, we want to finish the basement ourselves. We do not feel we are equally compensated for the 885 square feet we would never be able to get back. We were also told that the affordable homeowners are using this opportunity to get something from the developer. This is not the case. We have never asked for handouts, and we are not asking for any now. We have felt uncomfortable and pressured to take something from the developer when all we want is the easement release. Fair is fair, and we do not feel the easements were done fairly. We feel like nothing could compare to getting the 885 square feet of land that is rightfully ours back. There are several factors we have to consider as the affordable homeowner with the easement. What if down the line, we want to renovate to make rooms a little bigger or need more, need to make improvements to make the house more handicap accessible for my daughter as she grows to an adult? And because of this encumbrance and us not fighting for the easement, we are unable to do so. Our home has lived on year-round and not been used as an investment rental property. We want as much space as possible for our family. Why are we as affordable homeowners making, having to sacrifice our properties? Why isn't the developer working with the market rate homeowners to come up with an agreement with them? Our properties are the ones with the encumbrances, and we have done nothing wrong. Why is it that none of the market rate properties were used for the benefit of another market rate? There are much larger lots compared to the affordable lots. Lot 24 is 5,177 square feet, while Lot 23 is 6,799 square feet, making Lot 23 106, 2,622 square feet larger than Lot 24 without an easement. That is almost two times the size of the easement. Lot 24 less the easement leaves it only at 4,292 square feet, making Lot 24 7,684 square feet. That is 3,392 square feet larger than Lot 24. Let's not forget, affordable homes are owned by the year-round residents who work the jobs that are essential to keeping the island running. These same jobs sadly do not give us the ability to afford a million dollar house. We want equality in our living situation, and if the easements remain, we will never have this. As a black family, we know this all too well. The affordable homes that are affected by these easements need to be made whole again by terminating the easements. No solution can or will make these homes whole again. Only the termination of the easements can. As a first-hand home buyer with little knowledge of the 40B rules and regulations, we feel as though we were taken advantage of. The past seven months has been very stressful and has taken away from our family time. We are very grateful to have our home, but let's not forget that we had to work extremely hard to get our home. All we want is to be happy and in peace in our home and not live with any regret.
Thank you. Can we have a copy of that?
Sure, you can have this.
Thank you.
We'll take a little more to it, but I didn't read the first part.
Can you even speak currently, just to be got it on?
Yeah, I can do it right now.
Well, later.
Okay. All right.
Do you mind giving me a copy right now?
I'll give you this.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
I think it's one at a time, essentially.
Yeah. Don't you think?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're basically finished with 20.
Yeah.
For now.
Yep.
And then we have some options. So we're talking 24 now. Does anybody have any questions or comments about what was just said? No?
Can we ask what was, you know, what the developer has offered in compensation, for lack of a better term?
Sounds like she kind of lets know, in a way, right?
They were going to finish the basement, it sounds like.
Yeah. Is that part of the agreement?
I think I can ask, Jeff, for him, it obviously, yeah.
I think, good question.
So, so do you want to answer that? You and the developer have been talking and.
Yeah.
These made offers and you.
Um, so it was, one was to finish the basement, but it was like minimal work, and we wanted to have like other things done to it. So we just felt, when we, we're actually trying to get into a contractor to come and do an estimate before the last meeting, but it's just so happened that he came after. And he, so he quoted us what it was, like the work being done, and then what we wanted, and we just felt like we could have it done the way we wanted it done, like, like we would like a half bathroom down there, because it would be an area for the kids. So we would like a half bathroom down there and some built-ins and other things. And we just felt like we should just go ahead and do that ourselves, instead of just putting up two walls.
Was there, I'm curious, was there exterior access to the basement?
So, we originally asked for a walkout, and they had offered a bulkhead, and we didn't want that. And then, I mean, I had suggested maybe putting a door to go to the stairs from the outside, the stairs from inside, from the outside. And they were going to work on HDC to get that approved, but it's just with the, like, we just felt like we just wanted to go ahead and do it ourselves and have it done the way we wanted.
Okay.
And then they had offered like a step from the porch to the backyard, some landscape, and what else? Like the driveway stuff was included, but I think that was just part of the original tissle, thistle move anyway. And, and then they like threw in some like screen doors, which we had been asking for them to give us, to let us know the type of screen doors we needed to get, so we could just go and get that on our own. And they had threw that in there as well.
All right, I have a question for you. Mr. Glad is no longer representing you, is that correct?
Right. He actually said he wouldn't represent us anymore, so we, we found new counsel. We're working with Daniel Hill out of Boston.
Okay.
You're working with who?
Daniel Hill.
So, since you have new counsel, are you interested in more time to try to?
Work out a settlement?
Um, if.
Or not?
I don't, I just don't feel like we should settle, because, I mean, we've had like thoughts of maybe opening up one of the rooms a little more, because we do, like, I have a handicapped daughter, and it just, there are things that we'd like to do to the room downstairs for her. And like if we opened up that room, it's going to take up a little space in the yard back there, and then the garage is right there.
I hear you. So you've retained counsel, but you don't necessarily want.
Well, it's, at this point, it's see how the meeting goes, and then if, if we need to move along, then we will use Daniel.
Okay, because I, I'm not an attorney, but I suspect it will get fairly complicated and afterward because of the, the situation such as it is.
He's explained that to us.
Okay. Fair enough. Just, just have to ask. Okay, so Arthur, would you like to speak?
About the list, which we understood to be everything that they wanted of what we were to do, was the finished basement, you know, again, to a specific extent, the separate entry to the basement, move the door on the garage from the, from one side of the garage to the other, that is, not the garage door itself, but the side door to the garage.
So the access to the garage wasn't through their yard, so.
So it wasn't through their yard. Step from the porch, new storm doors, and moving and replacing plantings. Again, based upon a site visit of our representative and meeting with the homeowners, we believed that that was essentially what they were looking for, and we thought we had it worked out, and I had confirmed that with Mr. Glad. And then, out of the blue, we found out this week that we no longer had a deal.
When you say, you know, you didn't offer up any bathroom in the basement?
That wasn't what was worked out.
Yeah, no, that hadn't been discussed.
What was worked out specifically in the basement? No, it wasn't worked out, but what was offered?
So originally, we, like, we had just said, oh, well, finish the basement, and then he came back with, well, I'll just do one big open room, and we were like, no, we don't want that. And we had mentioned to his contractor about a bathroom, but it just wasn't something that he would have done. I mean, he didn't even want to do the walkout for the basement.
Okay.
They just kept saying, no, we're going to do a bulkhead, and we were like, no, we don't want that, because if we got the bulkhead, then we would have lost the window with light coming in, and we didn't, we didn't want that.
Okay.
We wanted the walkout with a door. And plus, it was like the walkout with a door, we wanted a door, because with the kids down there, and especially with my handicapped daughter, I mean, she could open a door and get out, but for like, to get out, Jamie had said putting a ladder to the window to get out, if like an emergency, but I'm like, she can't open a window to get out, she wouldn't be able to do that. So we were really looking for door access in and out of the basement.
Okay, thank you. Josh, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean.
Just identify you, I know you obviously.
Josh Posner.
Identify you.
We thought we had worked this out. There are plans, there's, you know, there was a specific meeting and plans that were written, you know, based on back and forth and an agreement. The reason it wasn't blessed, as I understood it last time, on January 11th, when the owner actually was asked, Mr. Chairman, whether they had agreed to the settlement and specifically stated to the board last January 11th that there was a settlement, that there was an agreement, and it had all been drawn out. It didn't go forward because it needed to be approved by the HDC in order to be something that we were going to be able to build, and so that subsequently happened since the last meeting, based on an application for approval by the HDC that was signed by the owners of Lot 24.
We never signed anything.
Don't go back and forth. You'll get a chance to.
Sorry, I believed that it had been signed by the owners of Lot 24. It was approved by the HDC in any event. So we just learned over the weekend that there's been a change in the view of the owners of 24, and so I'm still hopeful that we would be able to work something out, but we only learned at midnight last night that the, who the new counsel was, and efforts to sit and talk and exchange information and views about whether we could come up with a revised agreement. Carlie's is the spokesperson, and she's been busy, and so we haven't been able to find a time to do that that's acceptable to her.
So you guys had offered to cut in a doorway, construct a bulkhead access?
No, it was a doorway to stairs, not a bulkhead.
Doorway to stairs.
To existing stairs going down.
Oh, okay. You have existed, this is an existing outside access into the basement now?
No.
No, a stair from outside that would access stairs inside.
So the stairs that you take to go into the basement from inside, there would be a door to access outside to the same stairway?
Yeah, like, let's say that the stair was, yeah, it's a little mudroom. The stairs would be inside, if I'm understanding this correctly, this is the house.
I actually have a picture of it.
Okay, so no outside access?
No outside access.
Outside access.
Well, outside access to the inside to go down the stairs, no outside stairs, no bulkhead.
Two steps, I think, on the outside that go into a landing on the inside that is the basement stairs.
I don't, I don't know, Jeff, that, you know, if the applic, well, never mind, go ahead. Do you want to show us the pictures of that, please?
This is the.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I see, okay. So a new door from the outside to access the stairs to the basement. Well, maybe there's a reason for that.
All right. Can you pass that around, and we'll just, we can keep this as well?
Yeah.
Jim, did you see that?
Yeah, so.
No. Onto the landing. Got it.
Oh, off the landing of the staircase.
Yeah, of the stair. Okay.
So our main reason for not going ahead with the agreement was, after meeting with the contractor and going through and finding out like the cost and what we would have to pay for, to have it the way we wanted it done, we just felt like we should just do it ourselves instead of going back and having to like rip out stuff and having it done over the way we wanted it, because eventually we wanted it done a certain way.
And you, and it's your feeling that?
We just felt like, when we said we want the basement done, we had never like said, this is what we want. Like, he just came back and said, well, I'll just do a room, and we were like, well, we don't really want just room.
All right, well, so it sounds like tonight that there just isn't an agreement as, you're still open to the idea of an agreement if, or are you steadfast that you have no interest in?
I just feel like, like I said before, like down the line, if we want to open up that back room, just with the easement there, it just will be harder for us to do that. Like, I feel like we wouldn't even be able to do that, and we have like discussed that in the past.
So you just want the property back?
Yeah. And then if we want to make whatever changes to the property in the future, then we can do that.
Yeah.
And still have space for the kids to run around or whatever.
Okay, and?
We, we use our yard a lot, so it's, it's not like we don't use it.
Okay, and, and any, again, if I'm hearing you correctly, any modifications to the existing house are outweighed by the existence of the garage?
Yes.
And you, and again, I don't mean to bat, to press this point too much, but you, you are not interested in more time to try to work this out?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Has there been any discussion just about, maybe it's not allowed, a financial payback for the value of that land?
Well, any.
Whether or not they want to do the basement now, or never ever thought about doing the basement? I mean, has there been discussion about, just, this is, this is what that land is valued at?
Well, originally, we had asked our lawyer about that, and it, our offer was either do the basement and whatever he offered, and/or take 25,000, and we just felt like 25,000 wasn't enough.
Yeah.
For 885 square feet of land, that's a lot of land. And that's the only, that side land, that's the only usable land we have for, to be outside. If, I mean, if we put a patio, then we have no yard.
Okay.
So it'd be nice to have that part, if we did put a patio, to have that part of the land as usable space.
Okay.
And we, we plan on living there forever. Our family's been here since the mid 40s. We plan on living there for a long time.
Okay. Arthur, did you want to say something?
Chairman, I would point out that the garage and easement were in existence at the time that the property was purchased by the owners. They were aware of its existence, they were represented by counsel. The owner who has the easement for the garage, you know, is obviously, he has rights in the situation, he's not willing to give up having the garage, and therefore, based upon, you know, if, if the owner's position is that the only thing that will satisfy them is the removal of the garage, I don't think we have any basis for continuing to pursue a settlement.
Okay. So, sounds like we are getting towards either, probably, well, number one, we have to close the public hearing on this particular issue, and then we either now or at a later date, within 40 days, I believe it is, is that correct?
Yeah, 40 days. 40 days is correct.
Thank you. We would have to vote, basically, it appears that we have, if more time for a settlement is not desired by either party, or really, we'd have to be both parties, we can either grant the relief to allow the garage to remain and to be used by Lot 23, which is the market rate lot, or we can grant the. We can grant the relief to allow the garage to remain, but it could be used by 24, but, or we can flatly deny the relief and the parties would have to work at highest.
We don't even care to have the garage.
I understand that. I don't, just to be frank, I believe, or I think, that if we were to deny this relief, the garage will not go away immediately, by any stretch of the imagination, wouldn't I guess. So as long as you're comfortable with that. So does anybody, how do you want to proceed? Do you, should we think about closing the public hearing and then, then there's no testimony taken, we can continue to discuss either now or at a later date, how we want to vote?
And if in that period of time, some, by some year old, there is some agreement that comes into place between the parties?
Well, that's a question for you, Arana. Okay, let's say we decide to close the public hearing, not vote today, and within the next 30 days, assuming we don't wait till the 40th, the parties decide to come to some agreement.
If that were to happen, then they could, they could ask you to reopen so that they could withdraw or so that they could provide you, you know, with what they're proposing. But it's different than what's on the table right now, and that would require re-advertising and re-noticing, so they'd have to give you an extension of time to allow that to happen.
Okay.
But so there's nothing to lose in terms of closing the public hearing because we still have options if something were to happen?
There are options. They're a bit complicated and cumbersome, but there are definitely options.
Yeah, it would have to be re-noticed, reopened. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, it can be done though. But we would not be able to take, to discuss the settlement unless it was?
Unless it's re-noticed and reopened.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to be clear.
I mean, I don't want to, you know, if we were to close the public hearing, I certainly don't want that to be, prohibit anybody from still trying to reach a settlement, but.
No, I, absolutely.
I'm not so sure there's much more testimony to take.
I tend to agree that we certainly could be ready to close the public hearing. Mark, what do you feel about that?
I, I could see.
Jim?
Yeah, I could see. I just hope the parties continue to maybe work together because I don't know where I'm coming down on this or even if I'm voting on this, but there's always a risk that we allow the situation to remain the way it is, right?
That's an option.
Because it's a mess if we were to decide that, to take away that easement or to tear down the garage. So it's always a risk that the party gets nothing out of this, the other party. So I, I'm all for closing it, but I hope everybody continues to work to resolve this themselves so that we don't have to resolve that part of it.
Michael?
I'm perfectly happy closing it with hopes that there is settlements because the ramifications without a settlement, forcing the board to vote, could have some very strong teeth. And I, I hope everyone reviews the possibilities that exist here once the board is forced to vote.
Yeah, I, there's?
It's not like we, we vote and depending how we vote, that we're out of it or everyone else is out.
No, I would dare say it would be the beginning of certainly another chapter.
And it would not be a good, a good beginning either.
Oh, it is what it is. If the applicant, I mean, if the, if no settlement can be reached, it, you know, it, I don't feel like we're forced to vote. We just, I mean, that is our job. We would vote one way or the other, and the parties that be would have a chance probably to settle this in some other form. So having said that, should we come back to voting on this later or, Arana, should we just take?
Voting to close the hearing?
Yeah.
I would recommend that you make your motions as you go along.
Okay.
Since on to Lot 20, I think that you are contemplating a motion to continue the public hearing because they're not ready yet, and the board seemed open to that, so you would need a motion. Eleanor would have to let you know how you're doing in terms of the timing and the deadlines. And so certainly now with Lot 24, you could simply have a motion now to close the public hearing as to the modification request for Lot 24.
So should we start with Lot 20 and make a?
Let's stay on 24. We'll go back to 20 since we're discussing 24. So is there anything else you're, do you want to say anything else?
With regard to Lot 24?
Yeah.
No.
No. Okay. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing specifically to the matter of Lot 24.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Okay. The motion's, is that an adequate motion, Arana?
Yeah, just so long as it indicates, you know, with the pamphlet, just a little bit to say that it's a motion to close the public hearing regarding the modification proposed for Lot 24 to allow the garage to be used to serve Lot 23, the market rate lot. I think that that's just a little more information that's worthwhile to put in there. I can email that to Eleanor if that's helpful.
That'd be very helpful, but.
Thank you, Arana.
Jeffrey, I think, is willing to accept your modification to his motion. Okay. So motions were made and seconded. Any further discussion? Should we take, with Michael on the phone, should we take a?
A roll call.
All right. And then on the secondary matter, in terms of the vote, do the same five people have to vote ultimately on the, on the relief request or is that not necessarily the case?
The motion to close should be, if you have the five regular members available and all five of the regular members attended all of the public hearing sessions, then you would use the five regular members. If you don't have all five of the regular members, then you would designate, you'd be an associate to fill in for any regular member who's missing.
Okay.
That associate has attended the meetings.
Okay.
Everybody attended all of the sessions? Because if not, if you missed one, you can look at the videotape. Has anybody had that issue?
No.
No, everybody's, everybody's good. My question, Arana, was, was, okay, we take the vote, one of the regular members is not part of this proceeding. So we take a vote today with five of us and then a month later are voting on the relief, assuming no settlement is reached. Do those same five people have to vote on the next thing or does that? Go ahead.
That would be the cleaner thing to do, certainly. If you have a member who's missing, a regular member who's been at every session except the substantive one, they could, you know, do the certification under the Mullen rule to, you know, look at the audio tape, videotape that's available and do the certification, review all of the evidence. The cleaner thing would be just to go with the five that have right now.
Michael's not here in March.
Okay.
Then we're going to vote on this.
Do we have to, at this meeting, set a time for another meeting or no?
No, you have 40 days. You have 40 days to do your decision. And once you close the public hearing, there's no need to continue what you're doing now to a new date, and I'm certain, you do need to have your deliberations placed on the agenda in accordance with the open meeting law so that everyone has at least 48 hours' advance notice of the agenda. But there's not a need to announce, you can, but there's no need to announce that right now.
All right, and then at a subsequent meeting, we can, can and should discuss a possible vote. We just don't take any testimony, correct?
I'm sorry, at the next session or you talked?
Yeah, at the next, I mean, we're going to have to discuss where we want to come down on the vote, and that's perfectly kosher. We just don't take any public testimony, correct?
Yes.
All right. All right, just in the interest of full disclosure, I have eye surgery scheduled on March 9th. It was, you know, I just didn't know it was going to happen. 10:01, I'll have to be there the day before just because of the way Nantucket is. So I'm a definite maybe for the 8th.
And Michael will not be here?
I'm available before the 8th. I don't know when you leave at work, but I've had a long-standing appointment myself for that day. So I will be here, you know, all of February, late February 8th.
Well, I guess what I'm asking?
Can we do what we've done today?
Yeah, well, I guess that's what I'm asking the board members. Are you okay with meeting at a different time? We don't have to decide that time right now.
We would have till the 12th, is that right? If I counted correctly, 40 days.
March 12th?
Is it, is it 40 business?
It's 40 days.
40 days.
And you do have the applicant present. You could certainly ask the applicant for an extension of the 40 days. Obviously, the weather is variable and, you know, things happen. So if the developer or the applicant were willing to give you some extra time on the 40 days, that could make it easier for you.
Okay.
The 40th day looks to be Tuesday, March 13th.
Okay. We would want to do it, I think, in the next two or three weeks.
I'm talking early week of the 26th.
Yeah. Well, we don't have to come up with a specific date right now.
So we're trying to figure out who's going to vote.
No, I'm not trying to figure out who's going to vote. I just want to know the ins and outs, so I think I'm clear.
So where we're going today does not necessarily need to vote?
It's cleaner if they do or it doesn't. It's not necessary. But I would, I would hope everybody, everybody could still discuss.
I have something that may come to bear on this. I know that the owner of Lot 24 is present, and she indicated that she did not need more time. But I know Dan Hill pretty well, and so I did email him as you were talking, asking him what his position was and letting him know that I was online with the ZBA for the continued public hearing and asked him what his position was. Did he want the public hearing closed and the decision by the ZBA? And just so you know, I got an email back just now saying more time would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, okay.
I don't know if that changes the owner's, you know, position. She might want to call Dan. So, yes.
Carlys, do you want to comment on that? Could you do it at the mic too, please? Thank you. You don't?
Well, I guess I would have to call him and speak to him to see what he wants to do. Because last, I spoke to him last night and he said to just let him know how the meeting goes.
Do you want to call him and we'll move on to another matter temporarily?
Okay, we could do that.
All right. So the motion was made, seconded, we're going to?
Table it.
Table that motion at this point.
Okay.
That's all we have to do on that, right, Arana?
Right now, you just go and table it and take it up when she comes back.
Yep, okay. All right, so moving on to, let's go back to Lot 20 and get that motion out of the way.
So do, can we just make a motion to continue that?
Yes. That has to be continued to a date certain.
Yes, it must be continued to a date certain.
So that, so we need to come up with a date now?
We can continue it to March 8th and certainly I have a full faith in the, the board.
Michael won't be here.
He'll be on the phone to?
Did he confirm that? If he can be on?
Yeah, I can confirm that I'm going to be on the phone.
Okay, never mind. Sorry, my bad.
Can he be on the phone?
No.
I, I, I'm not sure if.
Maybe.
I assume we don't want to do the, the regular meeting next week would be soon.
All right, Lisa.
I could leave it on the phone.
Okay, well, okay. Nothing's easy with this thing. We can go to March 8th.
And you need to check with Eleanor, is that okay with your, your deadline? Do you need an extension?
Yeah, we would have to get an extension, I'm sure.
You're good?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on this conundrum?
Well, I think we're going to get it resolved. I don't think we're going to need much more, assuming that we do, we're not going to need anything more than a rubber stamp from the board, I think.
Right.
Why don't we just continue to March 8th and then?
I don't really much care how we handle it on 20.
Or March 9th, right? No, 8th.
Why don't we continue it to March 8th if it's a problem with a quorum or weather or whatever?
We'll cooperate with that.
We'll cooperate with an extension, okay.
So I make a motion to continue, so we're doing the, just item number one, Lot 20, until March 8th?
Yes, we're going to continue the discussion.
You need, you need a time, you need a time certain and a place.
1:00 PM here.
At the regularly scheduled meeting.
The regularly scheduled ZBA meeting, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, Jim seconds.
I made it.
Lisa made the motion. To continue the public hearing as to, as it relates to Lot 20. Okay.
You need a roll call.
I forgot. Why don't we just go down the table here? So those in favor say, or no, we got to take a roll call vote. Jim, are you?
Yes, aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Edward? Aye.
Aye.
Lisa? Aye. Okay, that was unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item number three, Lot 27. Arthur?
Yeah, on that, as we reported at the last meeting and we report again now, it's apparent that we have an impasse, that we're not going to reach settlement. I mean, we, we made a proposal, we didn't get a constructive response, and I think that we're at an impasse and we might as well close the hearing on that and.
Is there, is there actually a structure built on this one?
I'm sorry?
There's not a structure.
There's not a structure. There's an easement in place, but the, but the structure has not been built.
All right. Mr. Zikis, would you like to comment?
Hi, this is Simon Zikis. I mean, I've stated my position last time pretty clearly, so I'm not going to repeat myself. But we haven't heard back from the developer since December 7th, I believe. That was the time of his last offer or solution, which, you know, in all honesty, if we're discussing what's been proposed to us and to market rate lots, could we discuss what's been proposed to, to the other side to come to this resolution? I mean, wouldn't that be fair, you think?
Have you made, I think the question is, have you made any effort to come at this a different way? In other words, ask the market rate owner? In other words, ask the market rate owner to give up his rights and make this go away? Is that, but summarize what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we, we made a proposal based upon what we believe we're going to be able to work out with the market rate owner. Uh, that proposal was not accepted, there's no point in our just throwing proposals out indefinitely, so we haven't pursued it beyond that point, and, uh, I think we would need to see some indication that the, uh, that the owner of lot twenty-seven would have, you know, some specific additional proposal, or some other request, that we would be able to, uh, respond to. But, the owner of lot, uh, what's the adjacent lot, twenty?
Twenty-eight, I don't know.
Twenty-eight, uh, you know, has the benefit of the easement, wants the benefit of the easement. Uh, whether there's a garage or not, intends to be able to park his car there, willing to deal with some adjustment to it, but if we can't get it resolved on the basis of an adjustment, we would stand on our position that, uh, we want the, uh, location of the easement in that place, uh, confirmed and blessed by the board, to the extent that that's necessary. Without prejudice to our position, that, uh, that approval by the board is not necessary.
Right, of course. Okay, so, Mr. Zekus, same thing I asked the other lot, uh, twenty, Carlis, um, you do not feel, well, number one, are you represented by Mr. Godd any longer?
I'm still, yes. Well, in our case, since, uh, there's been no movement since early December, there was really not much for him to represent, anyway. But we're still, we're still under contract with him, or whatever, however you call it.
Okay.
Just a question.
Sure.
Uh, the, the owner of the market rate unit twenty-three, um, has he shown any willingness to...
Twenty, twenty-eight?
In this case, twenty-eight.
In this case, twenty-eight.
These are, these are wrong, these, okay, twenty-eight. Um, has he shown any willingness to modify that easement at all? He has?
Yes.
To what degree?
To the extent that we, of the proposal that we made, which involved...
And what's that proposal?
Moving, moving the, let's see, I don't have it in front of me, but can you, do you recall the exact specifics?
Yeah, I have it here.
Okay, go ahead.
Josh Postner, we proposed the modification of the easement. Um, wasn't huge, but we proposed to move the garage three feet away, and add land back, or reduce the size of the easement, so that additional land would be granted to the owner of, uh, back to the owner of twenty-seven. And we showed you calculations that showed that the net impact of the easement being granted by twenty-seven was fully offset by the size of the easements granted to lot twenty-seven from twenty-eight. So, there's mathematical equivalency, same-sized lot before and after these easement exchanges. The location, obviously, is different, and so that's been the position of lot twenty-seven. But we were disappointed that we made a bona fide offer, and instead of getting anything back in terms of a counterproposal, it was just rejected. And so that's why we feel like we're stuck.
Is there, is there a, um, is there a solution, what, you know, in your mind, what would, you know, what would be a potential solution to this?
I think the real solution that we would be satisfied would be, is getting the easement back, because the...
Okay, so no movement of that garage, move it further away from your unit, wouldn't, wouldn't be a solution for you?
Well, we're, we're talking about three feet there, so...
No, but what, what would be acceptable to you? Or is there a distance that would be acceptable to you?
Well, they, they can't move it any further, because it's gonna be running into the house of the neighbors. So, that's probably as far as it could be moved.
They can modify that.
Well, I think, I'm guessing that the three feet is the, I don't have the plan in front of me, is the max that you can move it without straddling the lot line?
Yeah, can't you, can't you modify easements?
Not the easement, the actual lot line.
You can't modify the lot line.
I mean, you could modify the lot line, I suppose, I don't know.
Would it make a difference if a garage wasn't built, and it was just a used easement, as in parking, and there was no structure?
Um, no, we'd like to have that yard back, I mean...
I understand, I'm just, so, because, I'm just curious, is it the, the actual physical, I know you want the yard, but as an alternative, without a physical building there, is the, is the issue less, is it less of an issue? To get the side yard, and then maybe no physical structure built? That they can put their car there, but they can't build the building?
To some extent, probably, yes, but that's not what we want. Um, and, but, but, it's failed to mention here is that the side yard that, that is being talked about, it is, all of it is a utility easement. Like, the whole part of it.
Right.
So, if, the way we feel about it is, you know, we're, we're the smallest lot to begin with, and with all the easements in place, we're left with about the same amount of room as a good-sized house. It's twenty-nine hundred square feet. That, that can be fair. And, we were assured that they can do it, um, we didn't agree to it from the very beginning, and that's why we're here.
And I remember there was an email that you submitted last time, from your attorney, right, that said that it wasn't...
The ZBA approval was not needed.
Right.
It said what? I didn't hear you.
So, at the time of the closing, uh, we did question, like, it, it stood out right away, from, from the first day we read the, read the purchase and sale, and we questioned it, and we were met with, uh, basically, why not? I questioned how, why could they do it, and they said, why not? And then, our attorney questioned it, and was given an answer that the ZBA pool is not needed for something like this.
Right, okay.
I remember that, you know.
Which clearly is not true, right now.
Okay, but, just to be clear, same thing that we said to the, to Carlis, um, you do understand that vote could go any which way?
I, I do understand that.
And you do understand that even if the vote went to the extent of denying the relief as to the garage and, and the easement, it may or may not go away?
I do understand, but I think we're, we're ready to, ready to appeal the decision, if we have to.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. Um, all right, so...
Just to be clear, even though you got that extra property, that could never be developed, because it's a utility easement. There would be no expansion possibility into that easement.
Yeah.
Whereas, oh, sorry, I was just asking about the, because of the utility easement, if they were to exchange that land, they would not be able to develop that area because of these utility easement, whereas in the back, there are no utility easements, and that allows you to have more flexibility, and that's, that was your biggest concern?
Yes.
With the, with the flip.
Yeah, you're right.
Are the utilities in the ground there? Was the, the utility already used?
I don't know, I think there's a line anywhere.
I mean, the reason I ask is if, I'm, I'm asking you, Mr. Zekus, if that utility easement went away, and was put solely on, or in the driveway to lot twenty-eight, would that be a mitigating factor?
Does that make it more viable?
We'd definitely have to think about it, but, the, the, the shape of it, and the location of it, is also a big issue. It's a narrow strip of land, right by the driveway, so, I, I mean, it...
I mean, I know it has a lot to do with the architecture of the building, you know, if your kitchen's in the back, and you wanna flow out to the yard directly from that space, that kinda makes a difference, rather than having to go out the front door, and around the porch, and out to the yard, so...
I mean, it would be less than ideal, to say the least.
Yeah.
Okay. It sounds to me like everybody is clear as, as to what's involved, um, and neither party is asking for more time? Are you looking at the plan?
Looking at the picture of this house.
Um, so, given that, I think at a minimum, we should close the public hearing, or we should contemplate closing the public hearing, um, and then, and then decide if we wanna vote now, or at that subsequent meeting. Um, is everybody somewhat in agreement with closing the public hearing?
I think so.
And then the forty-day clock starts ticking. Um, so, you wanna make a motion again, Jeff slash Ilana?
Sure. Jeff slash Ilana.
Like she said?
I'm gonna make that motion to close the public hearing, plus everything that Ilana wants to add.
So, it will be motion to, and I just emailed you the one, um, that we just did, hold on, I can cry from that again.
Motion to move that the board close the portion of the pending public hearing regarding developer Rugged Scott LLC's modification request to amend the comprehensive permit decision and approved plan of record to allow a garage to be erected and maintained on lot twenty, means lot twenty, so, and affordable parcel to be used for the benefit of lot twenty-three, a market rate parcel, that's actually...
Yeah, your, your number's wrong.
The number's wrong, that's, I can take that.
No, that's, that's to the other, I, I sent the one along for the earlier one.
Right.
We can adapt from that, you just put the right numbers in.
It's two, lot twenty-seven, lot twenty-eight.
Um, just to be clear, I wanna, that, we're speaking about really two issues here, I think. Uh, one, being the ease, the granting of the easement, allowing the easement, and second, allowing the construction of a garage in that easement area. Do we have to specify that in the motion that we're, or not we're...
The only thing to do for right now is indicate that you're moving to close the portion of the pending public hearing regarding developer Scott's modification request to amend the comprehensive permit decision and the approved plan of record to allow, and then indicate, you know, what it is that they're looking to allow, to allow a garage to be, um, erected on lot twenty-seven, in order to serve, uh, the, um, the adjacent parcel. And I was getting a bit lost, I thought it was to be used by twenty-four, but I thought I heard other numbers.
Twenty-eight.
It's twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Okay, I thought it was twenty-four, so it's twenty-eight, okay. So, then, proper motion would be move that the board close the portion of the pending public hearing regarding developer Rugged Scott LLC's motion, a modification request to amend the comprehensive permit decision and approved plan of record to allow a garage to be erected and maintained on lot twenty-seven, an affordable parcel to be used for the benefit of lot twenty-eight, a market rate parcel.
All right, but that, that motion's, uh, which is great, doesn't specifically talk about the easement itself. So, in other words, we, we, if we decided to vote to deny that relief at some other date, the easement would still arguably be in place? Or we would have, would we have tacitly approved the, or, 'cause that, that easement has to become part of, let's say we wanted to vote to allow the easement to stay.
But not the garage?
Don't, yeah.
Well, I would say that to, to allow the garage to be erected and maintained, the easement would have to be shown on the plan. I think it's part of allowing, if you did allow it, it would be, you would, you would want the easement to be shown on the plan.
Right, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, Ilana, do we have the opportunity, or the, or the ability to allow the easement, but not allow the structure?
And then the easement would not be for the garage, it would be for...
Parking.
Just driveway access?
Yeah.
For parking?
Yeah, just curious, I'm just...
Interesting, um, well, in order for that to happen, I mean, they haven't asked for that yet, though, have they? And if you close the public hearing, then in order for them to change what they're requesting, they would need to reopen the public hearing.
No, I think you asked for, didn't you, Marian or Arthur, didn't you specifically ask for, to modify the special permit to show, and the plans, et cetera, to show this easement? 'Cause the easement was not part of the original.
No, to show the easement.
Yeah, so, they, they've requested the relief to show the easement on the plans, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so that's why it's...
Isn't it, isn't it for the garage?
Yeah.
Garage access use. Right.
So, it's a, yeah, yeah.
So, then you can't disconnect the garage out of it, without them modifying their request? I think is what.
I'm just, I'm just saying, to be a hundred percent safe on the matter, shouldn't we mention in the motion of, we're closing the public hearing as to discussion of, of modifying the spec, the comprehensive permit to show garage use easement on lot number twenty-seven, benefit of twenty-eight?
So, so then, so then it could read, move this board, uh, close the portion of the public, uh, public, pending public hearing regarding, uh, developer's modification request to amend the comprehensive permit decision and approved plan of record to allow a garage to be erected and maintained on lot twenty-seven, an affordable parcel, and to be used for the benefit of lot twenty-eight, a market rate parcel, and regarding the, um, related easements that have been requested.
Okay, that works for me. So, Jeffrey, was that your well-put motion?
Yep, that is my motion.
Lisa, would you, Lisa seconded that, okay. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I'm emailing it right now, I'm emailing it right now.
Okay, um, so again, let's just go into the same voters, um, roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Edward, aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, so, we've done twenty and twenty-seven, what about, uh, Chuck, Carlis is not back here, so, we are going to...
Aren't we talking about lot fourteen as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, lot fourteen, we are talking about it, um...
I thought there, Mr. Chairman, I thought there wasn't actually a request before you for lot fourteen.
It's on the original.
Okay, then I was...
It's unnecessary, it's all...
Okay, I might have misspoke once, um, about that, so, this was, this was part of the original modification request? To the extent...
Was it, I'm not sure it was in there originally.
It was already on there, but you had asked us to put everything on?
Yes.
That's in my chance, and put everything on there, so we can get it cleaned up quickly.
Okay, fair enough, then I guess I could...
That the, this garage, uh, the, uh, garage easement was shown on the original plan, approved by the board, and the, and it's not, uh, being used by easement by another lot owner, but rather by the, uh, association, in connection with maintenance activities on the entire project. Now, again, it's been our position all along, that we don't need any relief with regard to that. Same time, uh, we're more than happy to work out some arrangements with the owner of lot fourteen, in order to, uh, ameliorate her situation, and to lessen the impact of its use, and some of the issues that she's had complaints about, with regard to the way that the thing has been used. Um, again, Sarah just came in at the last meeting, and I just heard from her this week, with regard to what, uh, issues she was looking for, and they include, included, I believe, moving the garage, which is something we're clearly not going to do. Uh, but, again, we need to get back to her with specific comments as to what we will do, and I certainly hope we can, uh, get the matter resolved.
Okay, Sarah, do you wanna comment?
Yes, Sarah, I'll jump from Michelle Johnson, and Ms. Johnson's here as well. I'd probably cast that slightly differently than Arthur did, but I don't think we need to go back and forth here. Um, we are trying to work it out, I think there's a significant difference of opinion. Um, other issues have come to light since the last, um, meeting, that I need to bring to their attention as well, so I would hope that you would be continuing this.
Okay. Okay.
Couldn't hear all that.
Okay, basically, do you want to repeat it, Sarah? In the microphone, just sort of.
I thought I was talking.
Chuck, can you hear now? Go ahead.
Okay.
No.
No? Yes?
I'll paraphrase as much as possible. Due to the fact that, they'd like more time.
We're working, we're trying to work it out, we have significant differences, but we are trying to work it out and continue to talk.
Trying to work things out.
There are other issues that have come up, not all of them are ZBA issues, some of them are contract issues. For example, they're building on the lot next door now, it's torn up an entire irrigation system that's through this house, it turns out this house has been paying to irrigate land that it doesn't even own, apparently. We haven't had it surveyed, but that's what it looks like, the planting beds are completely gone, there's not any ability now to walk from the front around that side of the house without destroying all of the planting beds, you know, blah, 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 it just goes on and on, so I think we need to talk.
Okay, so significant issues, this is a quote, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, you may quote me on that.
May I suggest we continue until the April meeting?
You could do that, or.
Can I just inquire just procedurally, Mr. Chairman? This is actually a public hearing that's ongoing for lot fourteen, and if so, then this is all fine, provided that you have the necessary time under your deadlines to continue to the date that you're contemplating.
Yeah, do you have the necessary, where do we stand in terms of deadlines?
Well, the original extension went to June, for the original request.
Which this was part of.
Yes, so that would cover twenty, twenty-four, twenty-seven, covers everything that was originally requested at the public hearing, opened on nine fourteen. And that extension.
Until June?
For the close of the public hearing, until June, I think, eleven.
June eleventh-ish.
Yep.
Does that sound adequate? For now, it is, and you would correct.
Motion to continue.
All right.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
So, is the developer still the association, or has that, the association been turned over to the owners?
Developer's still.
Developer.
There's trustees.
But it will be turned over to the owners, I guess, at some point?
At some point, at some point.
In this house, obviously being part of the association.
Yes, yes.
The garage.
Yeah. Do you want to give any sort of directional thoughts in terms of things like moving the garage and whatnot, or do we want to just let the parties wonder?
I think they should try to work it out first and come back.
I personally think this is by far the easiest one of the group, and I think that with some, with a little bit of negotiation and a few dollars from the developer, change the landscaping around a little bit, I would think that this thing could be pretty easily dealt with. Personally, that's how I feel.
The major, I think one of the major issues I have with this, other than the fact that it does seem to be in complete contradiction to the provisions of the deed rider, which I can't really reconcile, is the fact that when Ms. Johnson is parked in her driveway, which is her parking spot required under the bylaw, if they want access to this garage, they come and they knock on her door and they tell her to come move her car, and to me, that just doesn't seem to fly.
It's ridiculous, and I would think that could be pretty easily modified, I would think.
Right, that, I mean, that's.
Doesn't look like it on the plan.
Well, they could come in from rugged road, I think, or they could come in.
Or they could change the landscaping a little closer to the tennis court and, you know, allow access to the garage from the garage area.
From the tennis court area.
Yeah.
That she could have a job with it.
Yeah, okay, no, I walked around it months ago, I remember it, okay. We'll continue, I guess, and.
Till April is.
It was part, just, as I'm sure you know, Sarah, I mean, it was part of the original comprehensive permit, the building, the easement, everything.
Yeah, the building wasn't there at the time, but it was shown, absolutely.
Well, none of it was there at the time we voted on the comprehensive permit.
That's true.
The building was definitely shown in the easemented area.
The easement area was shown, yes.
So, I mean, I think this, and it was, you know, done well over, I don't know, ten, twelve, some odd years ago, so, let's just all keep that in mind.
I do bear that very much in mind.
Thank you, okay. So, quite frankly, it surprises me that this one hasn't been wrapped up, unless, unless the, well, it doesn't matter unless, so, anyway, let's move on. We good to continue, do we want to go to April?
April twelve.
Guys want to go to April, or do you want to try to do it before March?
I think April twelve is fine.
You okay with April twelfth?
Yes.
I'm curious, how close are you to being finished, Josh, in terms of the number of buildings left?
We are trying to get finished this calendar year. We have all except for one foundation in or in progress, and the one that isn't in is carried over from last month, and we're hoping to get resolved today.
But you don't anticipate, the reason I ask is there are three specific, there was the condition put on the release of the last three lots that no COs would, so are we getting, so we're still months away from that, if you just start putting foundations in?
Yeah, there's one of those three, we're hoping to get those finished by the end of the spring, those three, so we're hoping that this will all be resolved before that, otherwise we've got a problem.
Right, that's the only reason I'm thinking of March versus April, but I may not be here in March, it might be a good thing, but, okay, let's just go to April, April when?
Twelve.
Twelve, and hopefully we can get it resolved, okay, so.
So all of this is being continued to?
Well, no, we voted on twenty.
Right.
To continue.
Twenty-seven.
Well, anyway, let's just stick to fourteen.
You continue twenty to March eighth.
Yeah, March eighth. We haven't voted on twenty-four.
Right.
On twenty-seven, we closed the public hearing.
Yeah.
So.
On fourteen, we're continuing until April?
April twelfth.
April twelve.
Why wouldn't we try for the eighth, and?
I don't know, that's up to you guys.
With the, is that okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We're standing to continue it again.
I'm sure that your absence isn't going to be missed, it's tantamount to changing jockeys in the middle of the Kentucky Derby.
I am losing the paleo diet, but jockey, I don't know.
I'm seeing that I think he should be available or be at the meeting.
Well, for any of these, that's why the other one that was continued to March eighth already, so.
No, believe me, again.
I think we should do March eighth, hurry this thing along.
March eighth, and if it doesn't work out, it will be continued to the.
Another date.
Hopefully, a month is enough time to work this out. Let's go to the eighth, and then if, I'm assuming the developer and the owner of fourteen will be cooperative in blah, 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 okay, good.
Okay.
Fourteenth, I mean, eighth, March eighth.
So, does somebody make that motion?
Yeah, so, no, no one made that motion.
I'll make that motion.
To continue the public hearing, specifically to, as to lot fourteen.
Yes, to March eighth.
To March eighth, one o'clock here, Jim seconded it. Any further discussion? No, let's keep the vote the same, roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Edward, aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, all right, back to, yeah, Carla's, do you have anything to say?
After speaking with our attorney, we're going to ask for more time.
Okay, okay, so specifically to lot twenty-four, we would like to get a motion to continue the public hearing.
To March eighth.
To March eighth.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? No, same roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Edward, aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, thank you on that.
And you said March eighth, and what was the time?
One o'clock.
What was the time?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, that's that for now, I'm trying to, okay, so now we have.
Does its model change?
Yeah, so, there's a new request, a new, is this, yeah, I mean, this is technically a modification request, why don't you tell us what you want, would like, please?
About thirty-four and sixteen?
What's that?
About thirty-four and sixteen?
I don't know what we're talking about.
There are two, excuse me, two insubstantial modification requests pending from the last meeting, one was on lot sixteen, one was on lot thirty-four, and we've also filed a new modification request, insubstantial, for lot thirty-seven, that we'd like to have heard today. I can take them in any order that you want.
Okay, it's all coming back to me, let's just take number one, change the approved house model without a change in approved number of bedrooms, three, and installation of an exterior spa on market rate lot thirty-four.
Okay, and that, at the last meeting, you had wanted to see a new plan that showed the air conditioning units out of the setback, we have submitted a new plan to you that shows that the air conditioning units have been moved to the other side of the house, and they are out of the setback, so if you could approve that plan, showing the insubstantial modification to the change in the model. I think that's all the information you needed on that.
And the spa.
And the spa, excuse me, thank you, Ilana.
Okay, how do we feel about that? Does everybody, I remember the discussion.
I thought that was.
The spa, okay, with everything, we didn't discuss the spa before, there's no issue with, yeah, we don't have to discuss it.
No.
We're good with it?
Yep.
Three and three, three bedrooms and three bedrooms, no further expansion, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so, maybe we can wrap these all in, no, we can't, so, Ilana, can we just vote on that specific issue right now?
Yeah, I would recommend that you have a specific vote, lot by lot, it's just going to make it.
Okay, I agree.
Much easier, so it would be in motion to determine that the proposal, that the requested modification to change the house model, but without increasing the bedrooms for lot thirty-four is shown on, and you should give the date of the revised plan, and then you would say is not a substantial modification.
And the exterior spa.
And the exterior spa, okay, so, did you hear that, Jeffrey? So you're going to make, will you make a motion to determine whether this change is substantial or insubstantial?
And the plan is dated one seventeen eighteen.
Okay, so, if you're making a motion to determine it, then we just vote, when do we determine if we're making a motion to determine it?
You're determining it now, that's, you're making a determination.
Okay, a determination in the affirmative that it is insubstantial, I got it, all right. So the motion's been made to determine, or, not to determine, to make a determination that this is an insubstantial modification, to change the model number, same number of bedrooms, and the installation of an exterior spa on market rate lot thirty-four, for Cranberry Lane. Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, you probably would be better to say what the new house model is, to change the house model to, and what the name of the model is, so that you know what it is that you're, you're recording, what model you're approving.
Okay.
Cedar?
Cedar?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going, it was on something before, it's going to a cedar plan. So you'll add that to your motion, Jeffrey?
I will.
Okay, so Jeffrey's made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Lisa's seconded, so let's get Mark in on the vote here, so we'll do roll call. Mark?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Edward, aye. Michael?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Okay, okay, so then, to the extent necessary regarding lot sixteen, we are, well, lot sixteen, twelve Wood Lily Road, placement of garage use easement upon lot sixteen for benefit of lot seventeen, Ten Thistle Way, we already sort of discussed this earlier, that we were waiting to tie all of that together with your agreement with everybody, and you, Arthur, you alluded to the fact that you're not quite there, correct?
Yeah, it's just the, it was the HDC on that, that was the twenty and sixteen. This is, yeah.
Yeah, but I thought that you, Arthur, earlier said that the owner of seventeen hasn't quite agreed to everything?
Yeah, I indicated we're still in the process of an agreement.
So we're just waiting to tie that all together as one situation?
But we need to tie it together, and this was the reason we asked the last time, is we need to know that we have from you, despite the fact that we don't think we need the permission, we want the verification from you that you are not going to object to the easement on lot sixteen for the benefit of lot seventeen, the garage easement to benefit that.
And I'm fairly certain we were clear that, at the time, that we didn't have any problem with it, but the idea of.
Who currently owns lot sixteen?
The developer.
The developer owns it.
Yes.
And lot sixteen is a market rate lot?
Yes.
I thought, go ahead.
I was just going to say, there was an issue with the house placement, correct? You were going closer to?
That was approved by you as an insubstantial modification.
Last week, okay.
So we're only dealing with the garage now.
Okay, got it.
I don't think, I thought that the issue was, the reason we asked that you have all the agreements in place with the owner of twenty, seventeen, and seventeen, obviously the owner of sixteen, in place and signed up, was if we were to grant this relief now, the arguably, we, there's no agreement in place to get rid of the one on twenty, so that's where we said, just get it all together, we indicated, I thought, that we were in agreement with it, so you don't have to worry about it, it's just, you need to get your end taken care of, that's how I remember it.
Well, one of the questions that we keep getting from the lot seventeen owner is, has this been okay to do this on lot sixteen, and I can't give her a yes answer.
Well, you can, you know, that's an interesting question, what do you think, Ilana?
What is the question exactly?
What do you think?
[laughing].
The question is, lot twenty has the garage for the benefit of seventeen, now they want to, want to move or remove the garage from twenty, put it on sixteen, which the developer owns, and place a, an easement, a use easement to the benefit of seventeen, on sixteen. I don't think the board. I don't think the board has any problem with that whole thing happening. I, I certainly don't. Um, I don't think I've heard anybody else have a problem. As, does anybody have a problem with it? Jeffrey?
No, I don't think I do.
So, how do we, how do we make that happen, or give the applicant a feeling of comfort? I mean, I, can we condition?
I think that you just approve it as the insubstantial modification as requested to show the garage easement area on lot 16 for the benefit of lot 17.
What would be the negative of giving them the approval?
What is the, what's the downside?
I guess there is no negative. If they don't ultimately come to agreement, lot 17's the big winner. He gets two garages.
If we don't ultimately come to an agreement, we're not gonna...
All right. I, I hear you.
We're not going to grant the easement.
Why would you require continuation of, of lot 20?
Lot 20, they just haven't... You're contin, asked for continuation because you just haven't dotted all the i's and crossed the t's? Is that correct?
I believe so. And part of dotting the i's and t's...
Shouldn't it all happen as one?
I thought so.
Part of, part of dotting the i's and t's involves being able to move this onto lot 16, and that's what we keep coming back to. You're not having...
Well, yeah. We thought it would all be simultaneous, but I guess there's no real downside.
I don't think it can be simultaneous, right?
Well, it can be. It, you know, it all sits there simultaneously signed, but...
Well, on, on the same day.
On the same day. Yeah. I'm not talking about, like, within...
But it's like for them to completely say, okay, this has been resolved.
Yeah.
We have the approval. It's signed.
I, I, I guess, I guess, no. I, I see the light that if, for some reason, the lot 20 thing craters... Who cares if 17 gets another easement? Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
They just wouldn't use it.
Or they wouldn't use it.
Well, they wouldn't give it to them.
They wouldn't exercise it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Fair enough.
We're not gonna give it to them if we can't move the house.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that's insubstantial.
Okay. You're gonna make a motion to make a determination that placement of a garage use easement upon lot 16 for benefit of 17 is an insubstantial modification?
Both market rate units. Just put that in.
Shown on a plan dated... What's that?
Well, this is, uh, let's see. Let's, let me find the date. January 3, 2018.
Okay. Shown on a plan dated January 3, 2018.
Yes.
Okay. So, does somebody wanna second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on that motion? No. So, since Jim, um, made the, seconded it, let's just go, start with you, Jim.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Edward, aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So that's done.
And then we're at lot 37?
Okay. Now, moving along to lot 37. Um, this is an affordable unit. We were scheduled to close on Monday. Everybody was excited, except for the building department. And we would not sign off on the certificate of occupancy because they said that the driveway was not as shown on the original plan, and that we were required to come back to the order of deals.
Is there a plan showing where it actually is?
Yes. All those materials have been submitted to you. They're in your packet. Page 15 shows the driveway where it is.
15. Okay, sorry.
And page 6, 17, shows the driveway where it was going to go. Um, what we've done with the driveway configuration, rather than having a straight shot driveway back to a garage that doesn't exist, which would involve stacked parking, is we have put side-by-side parking.
So this was what was approved?
That was approved.
And this is what is built?
Was built.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the building department rejected that?
Yes.
Okay.
I did have a discussion with the building department. It's amazing that it was important just to get it blessed by the board.
Okay. So, is there anybody in the audience who came to speak to this? No.
This is a...
Oh.
Just, just in favor, I just want you to know, I represent the person who's buying it, and she's very excited, and she hopes you will approve this. She says the driveway is much better in this location than it would have been in this previous location.
Mm-hmm. I would agree. I mean, it's advantage not to have a stacked situation.
Okay. So, how do we feel about this? Since, since, since for the reason...
Okay with me.
Um, so Lisa, you wanna make a motion to make a determination that this is an, that changing the driveway mo, uh, configuration from stacked to what's shown on the plan dated...
1/3/18.
1/3/18 on lot 37, 4 Wood Lily Road, is insubstantial?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Jim seconds it. Okay. Let's have a roll. Any further discussion? No. Roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
Edward, aye?
Aye.
Lisa, that was Lisa. Okay. So that, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, can I just request that you sign the paperwork on that today, if possible?
You can always request it.
Just so we can get it over the building department. It's there. The two, two of the...
I, I see it.
Thank you.
Can I read it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Read it, but read it quickly.
Are you the only one that has the sign?
I believe I'm the lucky winner as the only one who has the sign.
I'd be so glad.
Okay.
There's one for it's Marcus, and there's one for...
You're so good at it, too. You're so good at your job.
Excuse me. Is there anything else that, or can, are we... That, the rest of this is, has to do the February 8 meeting, correct?
Uh, there is one other item we need to have, but not to do a burden stop.
Okay. Am I missing?
There's technically two other items.
Where is this?
Where are they?
Yeah. Where are they?
Other business?
Oh, here. I think at number five.
Okay. Um...
That would be done, Mr. Chairman?
I think so. Thank you very much.
All right. Always a pleasure.
Bye.
And, uh, good afternoon.
You, too.
Thanks, Eilana.
All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign this, so that the attorneys can leave. So this is just what's marrying. This is the one from Marcus. Who's this one?
That was for the time of...
Okay. So other business. Okay. Review, consider, review, consider adoption and approval of modified town Nantucket zoning Board of Appeals comprehensive permit rules and regs originally adopted and approved by the board on November 12, 2015. Okay? So, Eilana, why don't you just give us that? There was, they said that this was a relatively small modification. Can you...
Yes.
Remind me of the page number? You noted it.
I have the packet for me, but it's at the end, and the, um, one highlighted, it's going to leave this in section four. Let me double check.
Here we go. Let's see now. 149.
It's on page 273, I think. That's the highlighted area.
That would make sense. Sorry. Find it. I have a number of emails to do with this.
Okay.
It's, I, I wanna say it's section 4.0?
What's on highlighting?
It has to do with the, basically, it has to do with the engineering escrow fees and the ability of the board to...
This is different.
...ensure that we get some sort of electronic transfer before having to get a check.
Okay.
It just speeds things up a little bit if we need advanced, you know, review by, whether it be Ed Pesci or any other consultant, peer reviewer.
All right. So, to, to...
It's really weird.
Yeah. I'll read it to you. Failure of an applicant... I'm gonna, this is talking about funds received by the board pursuant to this section, which are for peer review, et cetera, et cetera. Failure of an applicant to pay a review fee into the review fee account... This is the changed language, right here. Into the review fee account so as to timely allow the peer review consultant to be retained by the board and to then perform the peer review work... Now we're into unchanged. Shall be grounds for denial of the comprehensive permit application. The review fee shall be available in the account within five days of assessment of the estimated fee, or the permit may be denied. This is new language. I'm sorry. Unless the board and the applicant agree upon a longer time period, with any necessary extension of deadlines to be provided. If there is an outstanding review fee owed when the public hearing closes, the board may deny the comprehensive permit relief. So it's basically just putting a little bit more teeth into the fact that the developer needs to pay for peer review.
Correct.
And if he doesn't, and if he refuses, and I believe at the workshop, Eilana even mentioned that there was some developer in some other town who refused to pay a fee, and they denied the permit. It's grounds for denial. It's right here now. It's clear.
I think that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense to me. We go with it?
Why do we have to change? I mean, isn't that state law? I mean, this isn't state...
No, I don't think, I, I don't know.
It's the town of Nantucket zoning board of appeals comprehensive permit rules and regulations, so it's not a state.
The old language was this. Failure of an applicant to pay a review fee shall be grounds for denial of the comprehensive permit. So this just, um, you know, clarifies some business days to get it in there, and you can, you know, extend that, blah, blah, blah. I stayed up a long time writing this, Jeffrey.
I hope you didn't. I hope you, you better know. Well, you know what? I'd rather have you write it than us to pay something.
Which idea was it, Edward?
What's wrong with that?
It was Eilana's idea.
It was?
It was not mine.
I can give you a little background. I just created a new, I mean, worked on it for quite a bit and has seen it formed for, as a comprehensive permit application. And in so doing, I took a look at the existing regs, and I, and Eilana volunteered to look at them as well, in helping me come up with this form that I've created. And she wanted to add that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just a...
The only thing I, I would, uh...
Of course you did.
...have curiosity, is, is there any area in, in the comprehensive plan for negotiation or getting a, another price from a contractor, presumably engineer, surveyor, et cetera?
I don't understand.
In other words, if the, if the applicant didn't like the price that the town's expert was charging, uh, as it stands now, the way I interpret what you just read, he's got five, five days to write the check, or, uh, there's, there could be a problem.
It's totally reasonable. I mean, if somebody said, I want $500,000 to review the traffic study?
Yeah.
Doesn't that kick into them the second part? That says that you have... You can request more time?
But it's a...
I mean, it's a question.
I gotta believe that there, there should be language in there that the fee has to be, you know, quote-unquote reasonable.
Agreed upon or...
But, uh, we, we haven't had a problem with it in the past.
No.
Eilana?
No, we haven't.
How do you... Is there... I, I've not read this.
The standard deposit from the 40B is $5,000 upfront, and when it gets below a certain amount, I get in touch with them, or we get in touch with them. And I've never had any problem with cooperation. Sometimes it doesn't come with a... I mean, I've never had the five-day deadline, but it does allow some latitude for you all to grant some sort of extension if that is problematic for the developer.
Because what I wanna make sure is that we get to use the person that we think is gonna do the best review, not the cheapest person on the block.
Yeah. That gives the developer...
No, no, no. Exactly. But, but I, I can't imagine that any board with a $40B without the, the developer posting a bank account that was big enough to take care of it, and it's up in, in France. Uh, and, you know, the ZBA signs off at the end as well. So, I, I just don't, I'm not sure why we're voting on this, but I understand it was a suggestion, but I'm not sure it's, it's a good one.
Well, yeah.
Well, I don't see the, I don't...
It's in the negative.
I don't see the negative in, in clearing up some language.
It's useful for me to be able to refer to this, you know, and in the application I made pursuant to section or paragraph such and such of the rules and regs, and it's, that's built into the application. It's just upfront, right there.
Okay. I, I, I voted for it. I just think there should be some provision for the, the applicant to question the amount of the bill.
Well, um, that, that's, that's all well and good, and we can, I, you, you could certainly bring that up with Eilana.
I think that's a whole different, it's a whole, sort of, a whole different situation though, Michael. I mean, that, you know, that could be in any peer review. It could be a plant, you know, any planning board process, they have peer review, and I mean, there's nowhere is there a, is there a provision to put a, a dollar figure on the maximum that the town is able to spend on this. I, you know.
Yeah. I, I, it's a reasonable question, but by the same token, I, I don't know. It, it's not, it's, it's, it's not really what we're talking about now here. I can, I, I can bring it up with Eilana and say it came up that...
If everyone's fine with it, if everyone's fine with it, then, then let's vote.
Yeah. Let's move on.
Okay. So are we voting, or does it just happen?
They need to...